So, welcome everyone to the Joint School Committee Members of Dover Sherburne School Committee, Dover School Committee and the Sherburne School Committee for October 13th, 2020. The meeting's starting at 6:32 PM. And this is an open meeting of the Joint School Committees. And it's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's order from March 12th, 2020. His executive order says states that we can conduct these meetings remotely via Zoom due to the state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. In addition, this meeting is being recorded, so I just want to let everyone be aware of that, that this is then put up on our website, on the Dover Sherburne website with the Zoom number that you can call into. And anyone may join the meeting for the Zoom meeting. Recorded, please note that other folks may be able to see your computers or other things if you are on camera. So, anything that you broadcast can be captured by the recording. We will have community comments, and that's an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. And we respectfully request that you make your comments brief, two to three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information and try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. And that way, we can hope to accommodate those who do wish to make a public comment. Additionally, the community comments are an opportunity for us to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. Once the public comment section of the meeting has concluded, we will move on to other business. And unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is the standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three districts. We invite everyone to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, but also understand that many of you are unable to do so, and you may have to leave the Zoom call. We appreciate that you have taken the time to participate in this important process. And we encourage you to reach out to your school committee representatives at any time if you have any questions, or if there's something that was not addressed. As for the meeting adequate for the rest of the meeting, as the chair, I will introduce each item on the agenda. And after the person has presented the item on the agenda, I will then proceed to take questions from the school committee members. Please indicate that you would like to speak by either clicking on the icon labeled reactions at the bottom of your computer, or you can either raise your hand, or you can just physically raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Dawn and I, there are several pages, so if you're not at the front as a school committee member, if you're not on that front page, it may take us just a minute to get to you. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And for any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. And that's it. And as when we are voting, just remember it's easier if you take yourself, if each committee takes itself off of the mute, and we can go in a quick and organized fashion. So, with that being said, we're going to start the meeting. Like I said, there are several, I have four pages on my screen, I think, of people. So, we're going to start the meeting, call it to order, and do community comments. So... Are you looking, Dawn?
I am. I see no hands raised, because they'll pop right up.
I'll give it another second. Yeah, I see one. There's one. There's Matt Guarini.
Angie.
Hi. State where you're from, though, just so everybody knows. Like, just, you don't have to give your full address, just street and town.
Sure, Macarini, Woodland Street, Sherburne. I came on here last week, and I was applauding the idea that we had the plan. I put out a couple of challenges about could we move that plan forward. Saw the note today, and I just wanted to flag a couple of things that I think, you know, I understand that we're following the letter of the law here, but, you know, when I started to look at this, by my count, you know, this is two cases that were over. The other point that I would get to on that is we're a town of 10,000 people. And as from what I know, I haven't heard anything from the school that any of these cases have anything to do with any teacher, admin, or student. So, when it comes down to who we're penalizing here, it ends up being the students for two people. And the numbers that the state puts in are extremely, are extremely conservative. And yet, we are going to use that. We've had 14, I think, this is my math, folks, 14 straight weeks of in the green. We have done phenomenally well. And now, this one blip, and even if it's an upward trend, we'll know it, but we're setting back plans that the school board, this committee, everybody has done a fantastic job to put them into place. And when are we going to ever test it? You know, it's, I get, I get the importance here, but the fact is, I continue to say it, I've talked to 20, 25 families in the last week, and their kids are having social issues, learning impacts. There's a huge study coming out of Texas where Texas is saying 40% to 70% of their kids failing in remote learning. And I just think, you know, the more that we push this down, we're going to get into winter when we're not going to have options, and then we'll never get the kids back. And for that, it's going to be another year lost of learning. And I just think that as we look at these things, I think some common sense is what's called for in handling them. And I know that we have the health committees, and I, you know, hopefully, there can be some doctors that can, that can talk to this, but it just feels like, you know, when it comes down to two cases out of 10,000, and none of them are against the people that are being most hurt by this, it seems like we're doing something wrong. And we focus on their mask discipline, and it seems the lack of mask discipline may be coming from, from others in the community, and yet, these folks have to pay for it. So, I just wanted to flag that. I appreciate the chance to talk to y'all, and I just think these are some of the things that we should keep in mind as we make these major decisions.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone else who would like to make a community comment? Okay.
We have Tom Grave.
Oh, we do? I didn't see that one. Okay, go ahead.
I, yes, it's actually Zoe Grave using Tom Grave's Zoom account. I am on Deerfield Road in Sherburne, and I just wanted to echo what was just said, that I think it's difficult to look at Dover and Sherburne in terms of just numbers when we're such a small community, because my concern is, what if you have a large family, such as five or six people, that all end up positive just within that one family? Is that going to then derail the entire Dover Sherburne School District? It seems like we have to more maybe than other larger towns, look at what exactly is happening. Where are these cases? Are they concentrated in, you know, one family, two families? When you're talking about just one or two cases that can push us over the edge and backwards again. So, I'm finding it hard to even find the data on where the positives are coming from. I can find total for Dover. I can't really see Sherburne ever. So, maybe I'm just missing it, but that's another thing I would like to be more easily found by the communities. Maybe the schools can post that, maybe it is posted somewhere and I'm missing it. But I think it's really important to, to just kind of look at that, since we're such small towns.
Okay. Thank you, Zoe.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Dawn, did you see anymore? Or Maggie, did you see anyone else?
I don't see any hands up.
I see a few now.
Yeah, there's an iPhone. There's no name.
There's no name. Thanks, Mark. Who's on the iPhone with no name? If you could state your name and your street and town? It's not coming up on mine.
They put their hand down.
Okay. Right. It could have been an errand. I have fat thumbs, so that happens to me often. Okay, so if I'm not seeing any more community comments...
There is another.
There's another. Which one is it?
Yeah, hi, 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 this is, this is Craig Oberly. I live on Deerfield and Sherburne. I fully agree with the prior two points. And, you know, if I would add anything, I think it's, we need to look at the numbers through the lens of our experts. So, you know, relying heavily upon the folks in, in the Board of Health. And I think anytime you're dealing with the small size of our town, as well as the small numbers that we're talking about, you know, I fear if we don't look at the numbers in the proper context with the proper expert opinions, we're going to be in this space where one or two cases might push us over the edge, and we'll never get to a pace, place of stability. So, I would just encourage us to, you know, recognize that this is a learning process. This is the first time we're obviously considering moving into phase two of our plan. And if the original, you know, letter of the law or approach we're learning or seeing may not be the best approach or the best process, I want to encourage us to have the ability and the willingness to consider revising that and doing something go forward that is going to make a lot of sense. You know, the two days my kids go to school currently in first and third grade, I would say are their two happiest days of the week. And I do know that the sentiments, at least of the two teachers that teach my girls, they were extremely excited about returning to four days. And I think they see the value in it, the parents see the value in it. And I think viewed with some context and some expert knowledge, we would see that the scenario in our community has not really changed much at all, and that we are still in a safe environment, even if that does not come across in the way that, you know, we look at things in this green and yellow status. So, I would just encourage us to look at some things, again, to use Mr. Green's terms, some common sense, some knowledge. We have a lot of highly intelligent people in our communities, on our school boards, in our administration. And let's make the, you know, right choice and move this thing forward.
Thank you, Craig.
Angie, you have iPhone has got their hand up again, and then Amy Collins.
Okay. So, whoever has their hand up with the iPhone, if you could just identify who you are and the street and town?
Hi, I think that's me. My name's Tasha Bellison. I'm on Meadow Brook Road in Dover. And, you know, mostly, I just want to agree with the other people that have already spoken up. I did want to point out that our metrics for the town are completely different than the state metrics. If you go by what the state has out for as of October 7th, we are totally fine to go back. And it's really a disservice to the younger children. My kids are actually in fourth and fifth, and this isn't even about them. I'm more upset for the kids in K through three, who really can't learn this way and are suffering socially. And I think that if we, we really need to look at where these cases are. I don't know of any cases in either elementary school, and that's what we should be focusing on right now. So, that's all I wanted to add in.
Thank you. And the next person, Maggie, was?
Amy Collins.
Amy Collins. Okay, Amy Collins, go ahead.
Hi, Amy Collins, Center Street in Dover. So, just really quickly, I just wanted to say, I understand all of the metrics that go into the reopening. I have tried to read all the trails, and I don't fully understand if, once we have our two weeks of green, and we go into our reopening, and at what point do we have to go back out of it? So, if we have one week that we are in the yellows, then that, you know, three days later on Monday, do we go back to remote? And so, if we could just, as parents, just give some clarification on that, because I have yet to understand fully how that works.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. There is a presentation that goes along, so some of this may become clearer as we go. So, I'm not saying that, that you're going to understand it fully, but you will understand what we have presented. It'll be just a few items down on the agenda. Was there any more community comment?
Jim McAllister.
Jim.
Hi, thanks very much. One other thing to kind of support the, the data that we're looking at is, I believe it's worth looking into how the state is reporting our population as well. I believe that they're using a number between Dover and Sherburne of about 9,500 people. That's based on an estimate done by UMass in 2010 of where we would be. And if you look at the actual numbers, we're really closer to 10,500 by my calculation. So, the, the over five number that we're looking at is grossly overstated if you use the actual numbers.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Okay, anybody, I don't see any other hands. Okay. Do you see anymore? Dawn?
I think we're good.
Okay. So, with that being said, thank you all for your comments and for taking the time to come and express your views and opinions. If we can move quickly to the Student Services update by Kate McCarthy. Let us all, Kate.
Yes, if you don't mind, Angie, I just wanted to remind the Joint School Committees that we, we asked Kate and, and her folks to come and just give us an update on how things are going with special education slash Student Services, kind of all of the above, especially in these particular times, I thought it was, it would be important for them to come. So, Kate and, and her two special ed coordinators are with her tonight, and I will turn it over to Kate.
So, Andrew, just real quick, we, are we not going to change the order of the agenda?
We definitely, we can. So, you know, I mean, everybody's, when you think about it, Dawn, everybody's in a hurry here.
Okay.
We were going to try and do the HVAC, move the HVAC and the reopening stuff up first, and then move to Student Services. And if that's okay with you, Angie, that would probably help.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. So, if it's okay with you, then what I'd like to do is kind of do the reopening phase two piece, and then, and then I would ask Dawn to speak to the HVAC update with, with Paul, who's our interim director of Student Services. And then we will move to the Student Services thing, and hopefully, we can move through these things pretty quickly, because, you know, everyone has a busy day tomorrow. Does that work for you?
That works for me. So, you go ahead with the, the reopening phase two of me.
Okay, so, I know Matt Vitale. Matt, are you here?
I am, as is Matt Beavers and Kate Peterson.
Excellent. So, so, we have with us the folks who are the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee, Les Jill Fedor. And so, just to recap how we, we came about this process. And I know it's boring for some people, but we've got to go through it in order to put this stuff in the proper context. So, when we were developing our plan, we said we would develop a metric by which we would make determinations as to when we would bring kids back. It's always been the plan, because what people were worried about, that was that, that came out of people expressing on the school committee, expressing concerns about, well, then how are we going to know when people are coming back? Like, at what point would we do that? So, the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee went right to work on developing something that they thought would work, and sought support from the Boards of Health in order for, for us to do that. That became the mechanism off of which we've been working. It also became the mechanism with which we reached agreement with the Teachers Association. So, contrary to some ideas out there, it's, there's a lot of stakeholders. It's not just the kids, or just the parents, or just the teachers, or just the administration, or just the school committee, or just the Board of Health. It's kind of all of these stakeholders are part of this decision-making process, coupled or layered upon all the requirements from the state, the guidance from the state, and the requirements from the state. So, within our document, we have, we have metrics that were developed, and that's what people are speaking to tonight about the, about the bar. So, you can see, this, these are the metrics, and we're referring to the two weeks in green in that other document. This document, where it says, you know, this is the thing that was sent home to support moving to the next stage, we'd want two weeks remain in the green. That was always part of the plan. And so, the, the comments before about us never having been outside of green in 12 weeks is not accurate, because we were out of green here. So, but, that's, the points are well taken, and I think the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee was working with less data. And I think the comment that I heard before was that, you know, we should be looking at the data and seeing what we can learn and potentially tweak, and that's all a possibility. I wouldn't want to rule any of that out, but I, what I think needs to be really clearly stated is that this was the document that we went to work with in terms of our teachers, in terms of telling our families. And so, you know, we can jump back and forth off of this thing every time we come upon something we don't like. I wouldn't advise that. I think that's a mistake. This was what we said we were going to do, and I think we should stick with it. That said, I, I think that Matt and Kay, and Matt Vitale and Kate Peterson and Matt Beavers could probably do a much better job than I can in terms of how this data is developed. And because they're developing this for us, that's how, we're lucky. We're lucky. We don't get this from everywhere. Not all towns get it. So, we have this, this actual data that we're, that we can follow, and that's helpful to us. But Matt Vitale, if you don't mind, or with Kay or Matt Beavers, just kind of giving us a kind of a recapturing of how this works and why, if at all, it's different from the state?
Sure. So, I, this is Matt Vitale. I can, I start us off and then pass off to Matt and Kay. I think great comments raised in the comment period. To answer the question for the person who asked about where this can be looked up, this data is released every Wednesday at 6:00 PM. If you Google Mask COVID Dashboard, this is the weekly report, which comes out each week. That includes the testing volume, the case count as it changes over time. I think one of the important limitations that affects this data is that what the state has at, at their level is individual case data that they're able to report out. What we're using is essentially pulling off the publicly reported state data. I think one of the important limitations is that the details of a COVID case and exactly how it's happening are private health information. So, the Board of Health isn't in a position to share that. The school isn't in a position to share that. So, the sort of details of exactly what patterns of transmission are happening, or is this one household, is this in six households, those details aren't things that are able to be publicly reported, because we need to protect the privacy. I think the other point, I think Matt, Matt Guarini raised some really good points. I think we may have people engaging in really good mask behaviors who still get COVID. And so, I think it's important for us as members of our community to just say, the fact that somebody has COVID doesn't mean that they were engaged in reckless or cavalier attitudes, or that, you know, great people get COVID. Some reckless people get COVID too. But I think that the fact that a family has COVID within it is something we should support as a community, and be really cautious, especially as we take something that's preloaded for all of us. And again, I can say I sympathize very much as a parent of a third grader and a kindergartner, experiences that families are having, and the challenges they're facing. So, in terms of the reporting, those key limitations are that what we're reporting out is a difference in case count over time. And so, that will include both newly incident cases, as well as cases that were reassigned. So, there are times that a case may be assigned to or from our towns. And so, as you look at each week's data, you'll have one week where Dover's 24, and the next week it's 23. That's because a case was reassigned from Dover to another town as they update the state data. So, it's accurate as of the snapshot they do on Wednesday evening. Actually, I guess it's Wednesday morning, but they don't retrospectively update those dashboards over time. For the purposes of the dashboard, the population number we used was 10,000, recognizing that there are differences in different populations. And again, I think the intent of this is to be a reasonable trending tool over time, not to be a hard and fast absolute. And so, we also report out and share with members of the school committee and the Athletic Department for other members of the Tri-Valley League, where we play interspersed sports and those other pieces, and use the same methodology for all those reports. So, I think that's my take on the background. Let me hand off to Matt Beavers and Kate to see if they have anything else to add.
Sure. Thank, thanks a lot, Matt. I think that's a good, a good summary of where the data is coming from. I think one thing I'd like to speak to is our intention and how we interpret that data, because I think one thing I've learned from, from speaking to a lot of families over the past week, and particularly in the past sort of 24 hours, is that, is that there's a lot of room for interpretation in that document that came out. And I think that, you know, our goal as the Board of Health is to make comments of what we think is safe for the community, taking into account the kids' needs, as well as the COVID risk, not just one or the other. And so, in putting it together, this document, you know, I think we had to have some sort of metric, and we had to have some sort of metric based on data that's easily accessible, and that's, that's where this came from. So, I think that we, in thinking about this, I think it's important to be flexible. I think a lot of the issues raised earlier are important, that we have to think about how an individual family may affect things, how we think reassigning cases may impact things. And so, I think that the key thing here is that when we, we put this guideline out, the idea was that we should be in the green. And, and if we are in the green, that's a go. But if we're not in the green, that there should be a discussion. And I think that was, that was sort of our intent, and I think that intent wasn't transmitted. And so, I think, as Dr. Kio said, we need to be flexible here. And, and I think we're open to thinking about how we think about this. And I think that the Board of Health is happy to weigh in at any point. And if it's helpful to have a more frequent interpretation of the data, then I think that's something we're happy to do. I think what we don't want to do is, we don't want to say this data is this data, and it's immutable, and we have to take it at complete face value when we know how volatile and how dirty the data is. And so, I think that I would welcome an opportunity to have more detailed input and to really think about what these numbers mean week to week, and to think about trends, to not think about points. And I think we need to have a discussion about how to move forward. And I think as Dr. Kio said, this was a starting point. And, and we needed to have a plan. We need to have a starting point, and that's, and that's where we are. And I think the discussion needs to continue. If I could tell you, I know what's going to happen with COVID over the next month, but along the next six months, you should stop believing me right now. And so, I think we need to be open to adjusting our interpretation as we get new data, and as we learn more about what's going on. And we need to do our best to apply that to really optimize the health of our community at all levels. I don't know if Kay's on and wants to add anything.
Yeah, Dr. Peterson.
I would echo what you've said. I think, I think it's clear that we did not intend to be locked into these metrics, no matter what, that these were guidelines, we view them as guidelines to which we would apply judgment. And I think what we hope to do is to be more clear about the fact that, that these are not immutable numbers written in stone, that we will respond to no matter what, in a, in a, in a way that's predefined.
I, I, I agree, and I thank you guys for your efforts with all of that. I guess the tricky part for, for me is, is in fact, the, the many constituents. You know, for every parent who writes and says, you know, get the kids back, there are parents writing and saying, I, I would rather we stick to the metrics. I feel more comfortable with this. I think it's, these are risky times. They're, even in comparing, comparing the Dover Board of Health and the Sherburne Board of Health, they, they, they may not have complete agreement all the time. That's why we've been so fortunate as a system to have Dr. Peterson from representing Dover, and Dr. Vitale representing Sherburne, and now Matt Beaver is also joining us from Sherburne. The fact that we have these folks working together is so to our advantage. And to that end, I have superintendents texting me saying, you know, what is, how, how can we do the Dover plan? So, actually, we're out ahead of the curve on this, and that's why people in the area are asking, because families are talking with other families. But, but the door swings both ways. But, but the door swings both ways. Yeah, we do have a plan in place for how we will reopen. But within that metric, we said that if we, if we dropped out of the green for two weeks, then if we dropped out of the, or went out of the green into the yellow, that we would need two weeks back in the green before we return. And I'm not opposed to revisiting that. I don't think it's fair to revisit it now after the fact. This is what we said. It's what we agreed upon with the Teachers Association. And I think that we need to stick to that. If we want to say moving forward for our three school systems, we think we need to have, I don't know, a standing meeting with the Boards of Health to review the data weekly or bi-weekly and perhaps adjust our timelines accordingly. But I think from everything I've heard and read and, and seen, there's, there's absolutely no uncertainty. I mean, there's, there's no certainty. I'm sorry. There's no certainty this year. There will not be any certainty this year. We don't know where it's going or how it's, it's going to shift on us at any given time. And this is part of our reality. And no one hates it more than me because I hear all about it. I wish we could have that concrete, concrete plan. And, but I also have been doing this long enough to know that, you know, black and white really doesn't work. We need to interpret at times. And I think that's what the call is for now. So I, I stick to the position of, of moving this out to the 26th because that's what we said we would do. If we want to revisit it, I'm pretty confident that our three doctors and Jill Fedor and the Boards of Health would go back and take a look at that and perhaps put, put in caveats. For example, if, if the state backloaded data from the summer into this and it drove our numbers up, but it wasn't really accurate, those kinds of stipulations need to be written into it so that we don't, we aren't so, it isn't so hard and fast. And it is a little more flexible. I'd be comfortable with that. It's just that in fairness, that needs to be discussed with the Teachers Association because that's something that we agreed to. So that's why I think also in fairness, we have an agreement with the Teachers Association that is as that document reads. So if we want to change that document, part of the agreement in the MOU with the teachers is that we will return to the table and discuss what we're proposing, if we're proposing another change.
I just have one, one quick comment there. I, I agree. You know, I think, I think we're in a position where an agreement's been made and it's, it's difficult to change that now. I, I will say that as, as the Board of Health, we, we felt that we were recommending that we should be in the green, not that we must be in the green. And I think, and I think that's a, that's a lack of clarity on our part that we can address. And I think that the Boards of Health would be 100% open to holding joint meetings to discuss the data going forward. And so that if, if our metric is, we just need to have the Board of Health discuss and agree because that's enough people from both towns with enough diversity of opinion to think about this. I think that that is something that both boards would, would get behind and, and would be willing to do to, to provide more guidance on this so that we're not trapped in a hard and fast situation where, where it may be based on data that we, we don't think is accurate.
So that, again, as I mentioned in my email today to the families and to the staff, that's one piece of this. It's one piece of the puzzle. There are multiple pieces to this puzzle. For example, can we fit all of our students in the building with the distancing that's required by the state? Can we run lunches in our lunchroom with the distancing that's required by the state because everyone pulls off their masks when they're eating? If you take a visit over to the high school any day other than today, you would have walked into the cafeteria during lunch and seen two or three kids sitting in the cafeteria at the tables facing in the direction they're supposed to be facing as required by law. And then you'd see all the other kids outside, sitting outside, eating their lunch in a beautiful fall day. But that's not going to last, folks. This is just the tip of the iceberg today. If everyone has to come back into the building, we have big logistical questions. Big logistical questions. So it's not just this data. And that's what I was afraid of when I first rolled this out, that that's what people were going to hone in on. And that's not the only concern. Same thing with our buses. We don't know that we can fit all of our students on our buses if we were to start bringing all of the kids back. We believe we can do it with the K3s. But once we start adding four fives, it gets complicated. Same thing at the region. So there's just a lot here. And the HVAC piece is something that we want to talk about tonight as well. And we're going to. And I, I wasn't sure, Angie, there's been discussion about the region, the joint committees having some kind of a motion to kind of support the reopening plan. I don't know if that's, you want to move that forward? Or what process you wanted to follow on that?
Yeah, that was our intention. Am I correct? My other co-chairs?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that the folks from the committees though have some questions before we.
Right before we do that. So is this a good pausing point for them to start asking questions? And if it is, I would say we go by committee. We can start with the joint and then I'll hold Sherburne until the end since I'm doing this part. Is that, is this a good place to start with that, Andrew?
That works for me. Some of these questions I am anticipating I will need to lean on our doctors for their, their thoughts because if it relates to this reopening plan, I was relying on them as the key developers of it.
Okay. Okay. So Maggie, if you would like to start with your joint committee for questions and then we'll move to Dover and then.
Regional.
Sure, absolutely. I have, just have one quick question. And that is, you spoke, I think it was Dr. Patel spoke about, you know, the PIPA requirements and that we don't have information about, about families and so forth. So when we get information on that dashboard, is it conceivable that one of the ill people could be a family in schools? And that our schools just would not be aware of that for some reason? Maybe a parent or grandma or, or a younger sibling or a sibling in a private school?
So what happens if there's a positive case is it then gets followed up by our public health nurse? So every single positive PCR gets called by the public health nurse, which the same agency supports both Dover and Sherburne. If we identified a student as a potentially either close contact or impacted case, they would then work with Joe Fedor as the nursing lead. Between the two of them, they're allowed to share protected health information because they're acting in a clinical capacity. And so they can work seamlessly in terms of disclosing identity or doing a contact base to figure out if there's risks in the school. So it might not be something that the Board of Health would sort of get a specific flag of this person is a student or the parent of a student in the district. We get a positive case, that trace would happen. I think we then had discussion of what level of disclosure can we have to the larger school community? I think that that's another place that we've looked to the state in terms of the guidance. Cause I know there are families that are like, I want to know if it's a cohort eighth or greater at Pine Hill. And we can't do that because if you then ask your kid who was in class today, anybody could identify who that kiddo was. But I think we certainly would plan to communicate there's been a case within the district and I think could communicate at that level with the CHI.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is that say, you know, family Smith has siblings at a private school nearby. Sibling gets sick, we would be aware that that would be a family in the school that's impacted.
Yep. So like if Tommy Vitale was at Charles River and was a COVID positive case, then Jacob Vitale would be a close contact of that case and would be identified by the public health nurse. It wouldn't necessarily fly to the district specifically, but that would be part of the trace that would be carried out as the public health nurse traced Jacob.
Okay. And then my last question that I'm going to take, I know we have other folks, is you said positive PCR case. So for folks who like jumped down to Carowell because they were at a party last week, is that case, if it comes up positive, being reported to us?
So if we had a positive case that was a molecular test or reports test, we have a number of antibody cases that are probable cases that get reported but don't trigger the trace. So if somebody is antibody positive and PCR negative, that doesn't trigger a trace because they're likely remote infection. So when we pulled that data in August, about three quarters of the Sherburne cases were antibody cases that were not identified by PCR.
Thanks. Um, I think we had Judy Miller first and then Anne Hubby.
Hi, thank you very much. I just wanted to make a quick comment, which is I'm, well, I was really sad when I got the email today about pushing this back two weeks. It's not, I want to remind everybody, we're pushing it back. We're not taking it off the table. And that's a really important thing to remember. The other thing that I wanted to say is I'm really grateful because I know that when we worked really hard all summer on this reopening, Dr. Kio was really interested. Everyone should know that Dr. Kio wanted to bring the kids back. And that was really important to him and at the forefront of his mind. And so I really trust that if he's telling us we need to, at least today, maybe it'll be different a week from now. But at least today, we need to hold off on our plan. That's got to be, in my mind, an indication that it's the right thing to do. Because he really knows probably more about this than anybody. And I also want to say that we are, we are really grateful to have the medical experts that we have on our two towns Board of Health. And we need to listen to them. Okay. Because this is science and they're the experts. And I, and I think that's really crucial. So thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thanks. Anne?
Thanks, Maggie. Echoing really quickly what Judy said, I think I can speak for everyone on the school committees that we would love to have the kids all back, that that really is our goal. I agree with that. My question is Andrew and maybe the Board of Health, but that what, how do we work it? What are our thoughts about our plans moving forward? Once we do open more and then have to slide back? In other words, so if this turned out to be an upward trend, but we reopened for four days for K through three and that the cases went upward, what would trigger then closing that back down and taking them, the K through three or whoever back down to two days? I think that's a really important discussion because I think in some ways that might almost be more detrimental and certainly more complicated for the district than moving cautiously forward with opening. Thanks.
One of the things that we were worried about, you remember, was we were talking about starting out remote. There was a lot of discussion at one point, let's just start off remotely and then bring kids back. And I remember asking in one of our joint meetings, okay, so under what circumstances will we bring them back? Like what would happen? That would make us suddenly feel confident and comfortable just bringing them back. So that's why we needed this system. But in terms of the, the sending them out, if we brought kids back, Matt or Matt or Kay, did you guys talk about that during your development of this plan?
So we have. So we have previously looked at the school reopening plan because that service, we looked at the data was the most time sensitive. We have not yet voted on the boards about the recommended school closing plan. So I can share sort of the working draft version, but it has not been voted by either Board of Health. So take it with that grain of salt. My recollection of it was that if we had three weeks in the yellow, we'd recommend convening a meeting between the Joint Boards of Health and the District to just, again, I think what Matt described earlier, kind of digging into the data to understand more what the trends are. I don't think the intent would be to automatically say we've got three weeks in the yellow. We need to close to say safe. I think the other big piece that was raised by a couple of the commenters is for everything we've done in COVID, we've never done it before. So I think that the things and ideas we had in August to say, I think this is what we need to do. Really, an abundance of caution is probably the most overused phrase. Followed by, thank you for all your hard work. I have the following feedback and suggestions. I think that the, the reality though is like, we've never done this before. So we came up with a great version one. And I'm 100% sure it's not the right forever plan. And so for us, I think it's really the question of what do we learn from version one? How do we make version two better? And I think that what we know is, is I think you made this point during a lot of those early meetings, Dr. Kio, is that we know that December is going to be worse than October. And so thinking about how we learn about the experience of reopening schools, how we learn about keeping our teachers and staff safe, how we figure out how to keep our students and their families safe. We're going to know so much more on November 1st than we did on September 1st, both at the state level and within our district. And understanding what closing looks like, understanding what opening looks like, understanding the social emotional piece, which I'd say is probably more a school committee and educator lens than a board of health lens, but all those are really important pieces. So I think our, you know, as I share our school closing strategy, it's really thinking about, you know, this is a version one. And so the three weeks in the yellow, we thought should trigger a discussion, but not an automatic closure. The state also has some guidance where if you hit particular case thresholds, it triggers an activation of a state resource to get a mobile testing unit to test the school community. If we hit those thresholds, a recommendation would be to go remote for kind of three to five days to allow that testing to carry out so that, you know, what my grandmother would say is a stitch in time saves nine. Getting it so that you don't continue transmission while you're doing the testing is an important way to break a cluster. My work life is at Brigham and Women's Hospital. So it's certainly been relevant to us the last three weeks in terms of the role of testing, the role of aggressive strategies and getting that under control. The other thing we said that should trigger an acute kind of revisiting of where we stand is if we have a single week in the red. I think as we look at our run data all through the summer, we've never been in the red. If we have one week in the red, I think we need to kind of stop and put our heads together. I think it's not clear to me, I think we need to look at the patterns of transmission to figure out whether we needed to go to remote as a district or as a school. Some of that would also depend on the degree to which we identified transmission happening in the school. At this point, we have not seen transmission happening in the school, which I think is great. When we look at lots of kids and lots of days and lots of COVID, I think we need to be ready to say there will be a case that walks through the door. You know, every door we walk through, whether it's Stop and Shop, Best Buy, the Natick Mall or Pine Hill, COVID comes through that door. So we need great plans to reduce the risk of it. But we need to also say that despite those efforts, there's going to be COVID. And we want to plan to reduce the rest of there being a second case of COVID because we know there will be a first case of COVID.
Thank you, Dr. Patel. I, I don't, do we have any other questions for the region? Then I hand it back to Angie. Um, yep, Michael.
Thanks, Maggie. And thank you, Matt, Matt and Kay. And I have the following question. I actually wanted to get a, a, first a clarification from following up from Maggie's question. As I understand it, if there is a case that would indirectly impact the school, a family member, the lead nurse Jill Fedor may or may not know about that, but that information would be protected information. So that would not make its way to central office. Is that correct?
So if there was a case within the school, then that would, and then some of this goes back to Dusty Guidance. It would sort of go to the local health leader, which in this case is Jill. Jill would work with the public health nurse. So our public health nurse is a less of a VNA. And so they would work collaboratively to complete the trace. I think that the district in the nurse lead would be aware of the details of the case. It would facilitate things like if this is a student, what classroom were they in? What's the seating chart for the classroom? What bus route do they ride? Are there people who would be in that distance? And would complete the trace. And so I think it would be aware. I don't know that that means that Dr. Kio would get an update that says it's a fourth grader at Pine Hill is the case. I think managing that information is sort of a need to know basis. So I don't know that it's impossible, but I think it's much more likely that the specifics would set with Jill is completing the trace. And even as the Board of Health, we would necessarily get, this is Tommy Vitale who's the case. We get, there's a positive case. And if we had a need to know basis to get more information, we could.
Thank you. And so the, the comment is really following up on, on your comment earlier, Andrew, about having a framework in place and a, a plan, which I'm fully supportive of. I'm hearing from the Boards of Health that perhaps, you know, this is V1. And maybe there will be a V2 that comes down the pike. And what I would request is that whatever the plan is, that it is a plan that can be measured and verified rather than a thumb in the air as to, well, it kind of feels okay. So let's disregard the, the data. If it's a matter of cleaning up. If it's a matter of cleaning up messy data, that certainly makes a lot of sense. But to make a snap decision because that's the prevailing sentiment in the community, I, I would be concerned about. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. All right. I had another question, but I have now completely forgotten it. So it's okay. I'm sure someone will ask it. Angie, back to you.
Okay, so Brooke is in trance. She's on, but it's hard for her to see on her phone. So we're going to on the Dover School Committee now. So if you have questions, if you can just indicate that, and then we can direct it. And Dawn and Maggie, you can help me look. Okay, so I saw Mark and then Colleen. Is that right? So far. So go ahead, Mark, and then we'll go to Colleen.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Michael Jaffe said. I appreciate that we're waiting one more week because the seemed like the three key metrics on the health and safety document were stated in that we crossed one of those metrics and felt it's prudent to wait a week. But I know we're looking at those holistically, it sounds like. And to me, it feels a lot like calling a snow day. And sounds like we need more clarity on the, the language, just so that we do know when to shift from hybrid to all in for any grade band, K through three, to use this example. And also, as one previous caller suggested, when to shift out. So I would look forward to having, you know, that discussion as soon as possible so that we're well equipped before the 26th of October.
Thanks, Colleen.
My speaker. At first, I wanted to say thank you so much to the, the doctors we have on the Board of Health who have been so helpful to all of us, guiding us, helping guide us as we navigate our way through this, these turbulent waters. I, you know, come at this with a background in mental health and I'm curious about the, if we are tracking any of the mental health, sort of the issues coming up between the schools at all different levels and how much that is playing playing into, if that's being taken as a factor into how we move forward. I am concerned. Some of the things I've been hearing at just all different grade levels. And I, I do worry that this will get worse through the winter. So I want, I want to know that that is, if that is being considered as a factor.
So it's a great question, Colleen. And I, I say this half jokingly. At first, I was wondering-
This is a question for both, both the Board of Health and Dr. Kio.
Yeah, okay. So I'm concerned about the mental health, frankly, of not just the kids, but of the adults. The situation has gone on for six months, seven months. And I think it's taking its toll on people. And it's really clear to me, it's obvious to me because I, I'm the receptacle of a lot of those concerns. I'm like the Maytag repairman who gets the calls. And so, and I can see when people are ratcheting up and they generally, parents generally ratchet up because they're worried about their kids. So I know that's anecdotal. And I think Kate McCarthy, who's on with us tonight, and Naomi O'Brien, and Steve and Goodwin, who are our sped coordinators and our Director of Student Services can probably speak to this better than I can in terms of how we're calculating that data. And I, and I know they're, they're scheduled to speak later. From the Health and Hygiene Committee, I don't think that that's something that was on their radar, but perhaps I'm wrong.
So I would really say, I think for us, all of this has been an exercise in kind of staying in your lane. So I would honestly say, I don't know that any of the three of us are the best experts to help think about, you know, this is how school intersects with the development of our kiddos and that piece of it. So I think it's one where we really have had a pretty narrow lane that looks at what are the disease patterns? I think we look back to this, the district and to you guys on the school committee to kind of integrate how you take those risks. I think we sort of see our role as this is giving advice from that kind of doctor lens with, with a particular focus on those transmission pattern pieces. I don't say that to minimize it at all because I think it's an incredibly important issue. But I just also recognize that's not the stuff, that's not the place that I know stuff that's different than what everybody knows. Like, I know that mostly from my dad lens, not from my doctor lens. And so I really look to you guys with the educator lens and the education committee lens to sort of think that through. And if we can weigh in, we're always happy to opine, but I'd really say that's probably a little bit out of our lane in terms of being the best available expert, but not that it's not an incredibly important issue.
And I would just echo that to say that not only are we, I think, not experts in that, but I think, I think when you ask about metrics, it's a place where we don't have a lot of hard and fast metrics. And, and so we have to think about it. But it's, it's harder to put in a piece of paper. And I think it highlights the importance of thinking about things that, that have to be expressed outside of just pure numbers. Because I think we can't put a number on our kids' mental health. And I think if we did, we'd put a big number on it. But that, like I said, that comes from a place of experience and not a place of data. And it shows the importance of mixing both of those things and making sense.
Kate McCarthy, I think, is, is on Kate's mind, speaking a little bit to this.
Sure. So I had a little bit prepared. I know we're talking about special education, but with my student services umbrella, I was going to talk a little bit about social emotional learning. We are, you know, as professionals, we're talking with each other about how to create community and pull students in and make the most of the in-person day and the connections through virtual learning. We are partnering with a social emotional program that has data collection as part of it, as well as social emotional lessons. And it's all virtual. So thankfully, we all have devices, some silver linings of the pandemic. But so, so we have, it's called SSIS. And it's a mental health screening as well as social skill screening. And it also is not just data collection because that's just one step and it's, it's one piece. But it's also a program that allows us to identify the information from that and infuse some support and lessons to students as well. And it's a, so I, I can talk a little bit more about that when, when we talk. But it has been a focus from the summer work with the task force around not just, you know, bringing students in and mental health, but actually, how do we connect through some of these physical distancing protocols and those, those pieces?
So there is data collection happening and we're using the data. Is that, I, I, I'm hopeful that we are doing our best to keep our pulse on how these kids are doing. And I especially, you know, at the, they're, they're all being impacted, right? Everyone's mental health is being impacted. I, I think there's the cost benefit analysis that we're all doing every day. And I really want to know that we are figuring out, you know, what are the detriments in, in real time? So I'm hopeful that we will keep gathering this data and incorporating it into our decision-making because it's incredibly important. And, you know, kids suffer, parents suffer, but you know, kids can really suffer and it can have disastrous, you know, do a disastrous effect. So I really hope that we are gathering this data and we are using it to, to sort of guide our, our moves as well.
Could I, could I just piggyback on that and ask you if there are any plans to start a student parent teacher survey on the mental health?
Yes. So all three of those groups is, that's part of the data collection. So there's a parent, there's a teacher, and there's a student survey. And we'll probably collect the information maybe twice throughout the school year. So at the moment, we're just thinking through logistics on administering and kind of when in the student's day, because I'm sure you've all felt just trying to fit something in, in the in-person time can come with some things that you don't want to take from. But, but yeah, so all three groups will be surveyed through this program.
And I apologize if you mentioned my children tend to come in and out, so I might have missed it, but when did you plan to roll that out? So hoping soon because I feel a lot of stress from parents and children. And I know the mental health is everyone's struggling right now. So I'm hoping you're going to roll it out soon.
Yep. So I think the next few weeks, we're just trying to think about where and kind of in what classes and in which ways. But yes, you should, the next few weeks.
Other questions? I know I see Sarah's got her hands up. And then Leslie.
Thank you. I do want to say thank you to everyone convened tonight for bringing a thoughtful and measured approach. I think that we are all unanimous in wanting to return as many kids to school as is safely possible for the kids, for our families, for the teachers and their families, for our community and the surrounding communities. And I guess I have a comment, perhaps directed to our Board of Health counterparts and also a question. First, the comment. So much of what we know about COVID has been evolving. And I think as, as Dr. Vitale pointed out, thankfully, we are in a different place with regard to our knowledge than we were earlier, you know, at the start of the summer, when we began to think about reopening. And hopefully, we'll continue to be in a better place as we continue to move along. But I, I note just anecdotally that there is a wide variety among families in terms of risk, risk tolerance. It falls sort of along a spectrum. And approaches to COVID safety are varied in the community. If we all agree that we want to reopen the schools as, as much as we can, I think it might be helpful at this stage to have some, some pointed guidance from our Board of Health experts, not necessarily on this call. I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know, if, if this is our goal, I think some, some recommendations for for how we, we should be conducting ourselves accordingly would, would be helpful. Just because the, it's, it's been a moving target as we've, as we've gone along. And I would also, a separate note, but related to the, the Board of Health, there has been some talk of recent advances in rapid testing. And I wonder if there are any opportunities to take advantage of some of those new and emerging technologies in order to be in a position to act proactively as opposed to reactively. Obviously, we're sifting through data, but that sort of affords the potential, I would think, of some, some real time understanding of what's going on in the community as opposed to, you know, kind of waiting for the Wednesday 6:00 PM data. So I, I just wonder if that's, if that's something that's being considered, if it's feasible, where we think we are with regard to rapid testing.
Sure. Matt, if I can just, before you go with that, because I think it's important to reemphasize that this was something that I, I believe I spoke to you guys about in the summer, that we looked at the rapid testing, investigated whether or not it was practical. Practical for purposes of this. If you give someone a rapid test on Monday and they test negative, and you're going to test every Monday, and they contract it on Tuesday, you now have no way of knowing. You, you haven't really accomplished much. And it's super expensive. And so the, I know the Dover and Cherubrin Boards of Health discussed this and considered it. Because Dover was in fact, the, the Board of Health that insisted, and Cherubrin got on board with the idea of doing the surveillance testing, not surveillance, the help me, Matt. What is surveillance testing versus?
Well, so, so we talked about the access to diagnostic testing. So I think going back to Sarah's question, you sort of have different layers. So what we know from community prevalence, both nationally and regionally, is that if you look at asymptomatic screening, which is what we're sort of thinking about for screening testing, the prevalence right now is about 0.3% in Massachusetts. So that's the Brigham data, looking at our asymptomatic patients. If you look at the state mass results for higher education as another kind of proxy, they've sent 1.2 million tests so far since early September and have a 0.09% positivity rate. So I think that the important thing there is to have enough testing to really change. Like, our disease prevalence in some ways is so low that having screening testing probably won't make us dramatically safer right now. I do think that there is some additional testing that will hopefully work its way through the pipeline with antigen testing, which can be very low cost. The challenge we saw over the summer is most of the testing options were pooled testing for PCR. And those, we sort of had a fairly significant cost associated with them. I think there's other technology that's not yet fully at the point that I'd love to see it to be able to roll it out in the school, which would like what you dream of is point of cure antigen testing that you could just say either kiddos can do a saliva test or an urinary swab, get test results back in 15 minutes. And even if they're not very good, if they're really cheap and widely available for managing the population, it can make a difference. If we have really low rates of disease prevalence, I'm not sure it'll make it safer just because the disease prevalence would be so low locally. But if we did have those available in the market, I would certainly be enthusiastic about it. I haven't seen any yet that have gotten to the point of being cheap enough to be really cost effective. And so what you see now are still $5 or $10 tests. So if you send me to test 2,000 DS kids this week, they're like, that's $10,000 to $15,000 a week. That's a really big number. And if we don't think it's making us actively safer, it's not where I'd spend my twelve bucks. But again, I think it's something that I'm hopeful in the next three to six months, we'll see more things being approved. And I think especially as you get to that lower price point and being able to do it sort of at the point of sort of without additional advanced machinery or technology, I think it becomes pretty interesting. I'm not aware of anything that's there yet, but if we got there, I would be enthusiastic to learn more.
So Matt or Kay or Matt, I just need to ask, just again, for my clarification. Is what I said accurate? In other words, if you had a test on every Wednesday, it's accurate. So if you did a test every Wednesday, then that person comes into contact with COVID on, on Thursday or Friday, it's of no use to you because they're out there spreading it.
So I think it could be of use, but it doesn't make it so your risk is zero. So you'd say, boy, I'm glad you weren't spreading it for two weeks because you may have been a minimally symptomatic or asymptomatic kiddo, but we wouldn't have had another way to catch the case. But it doesn't mean that by doing that, you made it so that you didn't have a case come into school. I think that the models they've done that looked at this tends to be twice or thrice a week testing. There's a guy named Michael Mina at the Harvard School of Public Health. He's got a very active kind of research area around this. And if you want to read about, like, he's got great ideas and I think is incredibly bullish on this prospect. But we just don't have anything that's gotten to market yet, partly because the FDA is sort of using the same restrictive categorization they do for diagnostic testing, which requires a performance from the test that is much higher than we're going to get with these very cheap tests. I don't think that we needed to perform that well to make a huge difference for how COVID transmits in this country. But we have to get through the FDA approval for it. And that's the kind of choke point currently.
So, so cost wise, test everyone in our district would be roughly $10,000 to $15,000 a week. And that's with one test. But if you wanted to be really on top of it, you'd need two or three?
I, I think that would be, I think that's a reasonable estimate. I think that there's other models with how they do pooled testing, which is they basically take a bunch of swabs, they test them all together. If that sample is positive, then they test each swab individually. And there's some different ways that they model that. So I think there are a couple of ways to cut it. But I would say my impression from the programs that have done it, you know, whether that's private schools or colleges is typically a seven figure cost. So you know, not, not trivial cost if you're charging $60,000 a year. You know, doing that cost may be easier than if you're a public school district, but it, it's expensive now. I think it could get cheaper if the FDA could move on those much less expensive tests.
Yeah. And that is, by the way, something that is, is troubling to a lot of superintendents out there. And I don't want to belabor this. But the fact that the state has not provided that for us and yet has been insistent upon it being okay to bring people back. That's a bone of contention with superintendents that I speak with because if the state had the testing available, then we wouldn't be dealing with this issue. But they didn't make it available. So we're being asked to provide it. So what we are doing as a reminder is we have secured five seats for rapid testing available for people who come to us within the system who are symptomatic. And, and we can send them right over to AFC and Waltham and get a very, very quick result, like literally a few hours. And that allows us to immediately do contact tracing without And that allows us to immediately do contact tracing without losing those two or three days, correct?
Yep. And I think one other thing I would add is I think based on, we had multiple family members of DS students who reached out, who sort of have background in biotech and other areas. So I think, again, there's complicated feelings about privilege in the district, but at the same time, just the outreach from folks in Dover and Sherburne who have either access or a testing footprint. Like, there's a lot of people who really as community members stepped up to try to think about how to help us do this. And so I don't think we're quite there yet, but I'm hopeful we'll get there within the current school year from an FDA standpoint.
Thanks.
Okay, so Dover, I think, oh, Leslie? Something to add?
Yes. My first question is for the gentleman and Kay on the Board of Health. I understand the limitations of HIPAA, but I'm just wondering, going forward, my understanding that we will be going back and discussing with DESI to reevaluate the yellow and green trend and how that's working. But I'm wondering if you can track the cases that are in the school? And will these be weighted more heavily? I guess I had assumed the cases that weren't in the school were being weighted, were were being considered and thus would affect us going back and allow us to go back if they weren't in the school.
So I think that DESI require, the DESI guidance about those levels are really about the patterns of community transmission. I think for us, where I would think about the school driving decision-making more is if we see a cluster where you say, I've got, this is spreading from Tommy Vitale at Pine Health, and now we've got two kids in his class. That's where the school-level data would be really important to be able to say, boy, we probably need to do something at Pine Health, but we may not need to do something at Chikering. But those three cases, we could still be in the green. So we might need to take some action on the school level because what Jill and Alyssa identify is an in-school transmission concern. That's where the school, as a specific site, would factor in. But in general, if we had cases, like if I had one case in the school versus one case in the community, it wouldn't necessarily say, boy, having school is really unreasonable in a group of 2,000 kiddos. Like, we're gonna have a case.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on now to Sherburne. So Sherburne, if you have a question, if you could raise your hand, Maggie, help me. Okay, I have Nancy and then Megan. So we'll start with Nancy and then go to Megan.
Hi. A quick question, and maybe I'm oversimplifying, but you know, when I heard that the BOA members, or the way Matt, Kay, were open to adjusting their interpretation, maybe moving the line. And with the MOU that we have teachers, it's two weeks, it goes to the yellow. Could that ever be revisited if, you know, the BOA members got together, said, hey, let's look at the data, like in the next, you know, because of the kids and trying to get back to school, can we look at the data, get the teachers back to the table quicker than the two weeks? And maybe get the kids to school a week earlier, given the new interpretation of the data. From a timing standpoint, I don't know if that, we could try to, you know, fast-track it versus, you know, stick with the MOA of the two weeks.
Also, so the two weeks, Nancy, includes tomorrow's data. So it's really one week from tomorrow, we'll have our second week's worth of data. And then the following Monday is when we would bring the kids back. So I don't know that, I don't know, I don't know that we're going to be able to fast-track it that much more.
Okay.
Right? Because we were planning to have them come back this coming Monday.
Right.
Basically, it's really a week, not two weeks. And so it's two weeks from when this first set of data came out, which was Wednesday last week. So now we're behind the eight ball, but it actually works in our favor because we're not as far away from this as it feels like. We're really a week from this Monday. So not great, but that's what we lost was that time there. I am not opposed to, I do think that the committees should vote the motion that that I think is coming forward, I'm not sure, that supports this reopening update. I mean, this reopening plan, I do think that that should be supported by the school committees. And, but I believe it will say something, or hopefully says something to the effect of, you know, along with guidance from the Boards of Health, which allows us to then circle back to the Boards of Health and say, how can we tweak this to make it a little more nimble? And so that we would begin working on, I would argue, as soon as possible, assuming that our doctors are on board with that, and I'm pretty sure they will be. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Are there any more questions to that answer? Megan?
So that kind of leads into my question, Andrew. I just wanted to clarify. So if the Boards of Health convene and agree that we should have, you know, some more flexibility or, you know, kind of additional insight into these numbers before we decide how to move and what decisions to make, does that then require us to revisit the the MOU that we have in place with the teachers regarding coming back into school?
Anytime we make a change to the plan agreed upon, the plan agreed upon in the MOU, we need to go back to the teachers, yes.
Okay. There are a lot of pieces to this. I mean, there's the numbers piece, there's the MOU piece, there's the physical space in the schools piece, the transportation piece, there's just many, it's a very complicated puzzle.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
And just a point of clarification there.
That that was still part of the discussion, too.
And so just a point of clarification there, Megan, I think that if the MOU's been changed, then we would have to, that would also need to come back to us to ratify the MOU change.
Right.
Sorry, that's only if you're changing the MOU, but I don't think we would be, Michael. Because what it says in the MOU is that if there's a change to the plan, it just needs to be discussed by the bodies that wrote the MOU. So the members who, from representing the school committees and the administration, would sit down with the members of the DSEA. And we would discuss, how does this impact you? And what can we do to address your concerns? It doesn't mean we can't do it, but we definitely have to return to the table. That's a form of impact bargaining, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it for Sherburne? Maggie, help.
Amanda has her hand up.
Amanda, do you have your hand up?
Thank you. I just have a question specifically about, I think it's related to what Megan just asked, but about the language of the motion. Because that MOU and the plan voted on in the summer is kind of the anchor of the motion as written that we're planning on voting on. And I just don't know if that language needs to change at all, given the discussion about revisiting the metrics.
I think what you guys had been discussing as a possible, I mean, what I put forward to you is something that would potentially, it would just basically say that the school committees are giving me permission to proceed in accordance with our reopening plan, in accordance with our original reopening plan and any of the guidance from the Department of Education, the Department of Public Health, the CDC, and the Boards of Health. I think that's what I was hoping that you guys would give me permission to do. And if, in fact, you did give me permission to do that, that would mean I would be able to proceed a little more nimbly with the Teachers Association and with the Boards of Health. That doesn't mean to keep you in the dark. I think you'd need to know what we come up with. And it may be, in fact, that we come up with something where there's an ongoing process of them giving us a review of the data and their thoughts on our bringing students back. It basically moves us off of the more rigid timeline and builds some more flexibility into the timeline. But I hear what Michael Jaffe is saying in that that's a bit of a slippery slope because then it becomes this political thing. Who's got the strongest will to, you know, get us to change our positions? And that was why we came up with this thing, because it did give us kind of a strong roadmap.
Is that answered?
Angie?
Yes.
It's Brooke. I'm sorry, I'm driving, so I don't have a camera on, but I feel strongly, I'd like to make that motion that we vote. I think we need to leave this to our public health experts and our district leadership, both in the central office and in the school buildings. And if we want expedite, make this be as nimble, in Dr. Kio's words, but also move this process ahead as quickly as possible. I would move that we vote.
Okay, I agree. So with that being said, I'm going to read the motion language that I have here. The language, which I would need someone to move to approve.
Just to be clear, Angie, this was my recommendation that you're reading.
Right. But I'm going to read the actual language for it so that they have it. So this is the motion. It's as proposed by Dr. Kio to authorize the superintendent to implement changes to the instructional model then in place in any school district, in any school in the district, i.e. remote, in-person, or hybrid, as provided by the Dover Sherburne Fall 2020 Reopening Plan and the Memorandum of Understanding with the DSEA in a manner consistent with the framework-staged reopening plan as presented to the school committees on October 13, 2020, and guidance and approval from the Dover and Sherburne Boards of Health, the CDC, DPH, and DESI. So that is the motion that I need for someone to bring. And then we're gonna do it by committee. So we'll start with the region. Maggie? For the region, do I have such a motion? So moved. Judy Miller, motion made by Judy Miller, second.
Anne Hovey, second.
Second by Anne Hovey. Any discussion?
I do have a quick question. According to the language that I just heard, it does seem that if this most recent iteration of the reopening plan does change, that that's, the language seems to indicate that we then need to revisit, or is that not? I just want the clarification on that.
I wouldn't think that it means, I mean, I think that we're generally speaking in the same framework, but what would be changing is the guidance from the Board of Health and a conversation with the DSEA, which I think would be contained in that.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
We're talking about an entirely different framework. We're just talking about different metrics and timelines. Right.
Okay.
But isn't that the framework? It's not the timelines, but the metrics.
Right. But we're also saying as consistent with guidance and approval from the Boards of Health. So if the parties go to the table and they determine that they need to look in a different way at the guidelines, then I think that would be contained within this, no? Yes, because this is just to authorize, and it says, the framework-staged reopening plan is presented and guidance and approval from Dover and Sherburne Boards of Health, CDC, DPH, and DESI.
I think what you're protecting yourself from is me going rogue and saying, I'm just gonna do whatever I want. And I can't because I'm bound by the guidance of Board of Health and these. So I
Yeah, I think, yeah, exactly. I think that this just gives us some assurance that you're going to, you know, do this within the framework of what we've already agreed to. But it gives you the flexibility, Dr. Kio, to be able to move nimbly with the guidance of the Board of Health. Is that the intent here?
Yes, but I think it's reasonable for you to assume that if, and I'm saying this for the record, if they come up with some kind of different timeline or something like that, that you would be informed of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, my intent was not questioning the basic intent of the motion. I was just seeking clarification, so we were all on the same page.
Okay.
All right. So I'd like to just call a roll call vote, if that's okay. Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Michael Jaffe?
Michael Jaffe, abstain.
Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Lynn Collins? Lynn Collins? Okay, we'll hold on that. Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Okay. Do I have Lynn Collins? Oh, there you are. Sorry. Yes, got you. All right. I think something's going on with her audio. Thank you. And Maggie Sharon, yes. Okay, over to Angie. Okay, so I'm going to do Sherburne first, and then I'll do, I'll call on Dover for Brooke, and she can take over via audio. So Sherburne, if you'll unmute yourself, do I have someone to bring forth the motion as proposed to authorize the superintendent for the implementation of changes on the reopening plan as needed?
Megan Page, so moved.
Have a second?
Yeah, it's Cordell's second.
Okay, and I'm going to do a roll call vote. I'm gonna start with Amanda.
Brown, yes.
Mike Fitzgerald?
Mike Fitzgerald, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
And Nancy?
Nancy Cordell, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes. Okay, so now we're gonna go to Dover, and Brooke is in the car, so everyone take yourself off mute, and Brooke can take over from there.
Okay, thanks, Angie. I can't read the language at the moment, but if, do I have a motion to adopt the same, the same motion that Angie just said?
Mark. Sure.
Okay. And, yeah, that's Mark, and then a second?
Colleen, third, second.
Sorry, I'm just in a funny place now, of course. Is there any discussion?
There's none, Brooke.
Thank you. Sorry, guys. I'm gonna call you out. I have no idea what order. So, Mark?
Mark, Kelly? Yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Leslie?
Leslie Leon, yes.
And Sarah?
Erica Tiers, done, yes.
And Brooke Metteries, yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So with that, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is your HVAC update.
Yes, thank you. So as I mentioned to the committee, we have brought on a facilities consultant to sort of help out as we continue to look for a permanent facilities director. And I'm pleased that Paul is here with us tonight and has been my partner in this HVAC review with the outside consultant. And I've actually asked him tonight to sort of recap for you where we are in the process.
Hello, everyone. I guess this is the way we greet nowadays, so pleasure to meet you all. Just a little bit quickly about me. I've been a facilities director for over 26 years. I started in Watertown for 10 years, and then moved on to the city of Newton. I put 16 years in in Newton and then decided I'd retire. And that lasted all of four days, so it was a failed retirement. And I came out to do some helping in other communities like this. And I just want to say that during all this COVID, I think we've heard the statement many times, I didn't sign up for this. But I'm here to tell you that I did. Dawn called me. She said she needed help with some things, facilities, cleaning, HVAC, the buildings. So I did sign up for this. Just so people know, I'm here on my own free will. As most of you probably know, the district did hire Borough Hepold BH to evaluate the HVAC systems in all five buildings that are in the district. They did two site visits, September 10th and the 16th. And during these visits, they were very in-depth. They were up on the roof, climbed up on the roof and opened every rooftop unit, took pictures inside and out, did a full inspection, checking on filters and sizes and all that stuff. Took pictures inside and out, um, did a full inspection, checking on filters and sizes and, and all that stuff. Um, they did go down through the buildings, um, into, you know, a sampling of classrooms. Um, then did see the special spaces, the gyms, the, the auditoriums, libraries and, and all of the, uh. In, in every building in, in the district. Um, so they, they took a lot of pictures, they took a lot of measurements, they, they. Collected as much data as they could. Today, we received our last draft report, uh, for the last building. And Dawn and I have been, uh. Harvesting the pertinent information to. Bring it down to, uh, kind of speed this process up with, with all of you. So there's. What I'm going to read from you tonight is just. The Reader's Digest version. There's many pages of this report, so. Um, and, and it'll be made available once it's in a final, final form. Um, so we did our best to summarize and prioritize the information. Um, pulling apart the. Engineering legalese that they, that, that, um, engineers do. Um, and the first thing we learned that there are three ways to deal with the air quality during COVID. Um, dilute, kill, and catch. Um, and I'll explain that dilute is probably what we're doing now in this weather, uh, not on a rainy day maybe, but. Opening windows, opening doors, just letting air through the building. Um, all of those energy management. Tools and classes that we took are all out the window now. So we're just opening everything that we can to dilute the air in the. In the building to, to bring it down to a safer level. Um, kill, um, was the next one. And we all know about disinfectants. Um, we, we've, you know, heard about them, ad nauseam. Um, we can clean the desk, then we can disinfect the desk and that we can kill it. Well, we can't do that in the air. Um, when we're talking about HVAC, we, we, we can't spray disinfectant in the air. We can't throw hand sanitizer up and hope it cleans the air. Um, so the way to kill. The, um, germ in the air is with ultraviolet light. Ultraviolet light is one of the only proven. Um, methods. It, it's been in place since the early 1900s. They use it for. Medical equipment cleaning and they've used it for sanitizing, um, all kinds of things. Um, so that's how we would kill it if that was the way to go. And then catch. I think this was originally filter when, um. Our engineer told us when Nora told us this, but I like the way it flowed when it said dilute, kill and catch. So catch is when we filter it. Um, so we've, um. Everyone's heard of MERV ratings now, no one, no one but facilities people knew about MERV ratings until COVID. Um, and a MERV, MERV just, i- it means minimum efficiency reporting value. So take that for what it's worth, but the MERV rating is the higher the number, the more it catches. So it's a thicker filter. So, um, the first things that come out was, you know, put in thicker filters. I particularly have, uh, I, I myself have a, a cabin in New York, so I spent a lot of time listening to New York news stations during the shutdown. And I remember that Governor Cuomo said, put in MERV 18s, we're going to put in MERV 20s everywhere. I really like what he's done with the state of New York and I like Governor Cuomo, but I don't want him working on my HVAC system. Um, we can't. We can't put in. A MERV 18 filter, a MERV 20 filter, because our, our motors and our equipment. Will burn up. It, it just can't bring the air through. It, it, it drags. The thicker the filter, the more drag there is of air coming through. So part of our charge here, um, was to find out what equipment. We have. How it operates and what's the best filtration systems we can put in it. Without causing breakdown. Um, so in reading the reports. There were some big things that we found out and that's, there was no commonality in any of the buildings. Um, all five buildings have different personalities, um, as a building. Um, we couldn't say that dilution was the solution for all the buildings. Um, each building had a different solution. Um, some had combinations of solutions. Uh, the only common thread we saw in the reports was the comment that each building. Said building maintenance appears to be excellent. They wrote that in every. Every report, all five buildings, and that's a testament to all of you and people before you that. Have taken care of these buildings to the best of their ability. At Pine Hill, they said that the equipment is nearing the end of its life, but that. The, the life has been extended due to the upkeep of the equipment. Um, and then we, we, we also found that some of the things that they. Wanted us to do, we were already doing. Because you'll, we'll hear about, um, purging the building. Purging the building an hour before and an hour after. That means that we're going to. Open up all the outside air dampers, we're going to turn up the exhaust vents as much as we can do. And we're going to take everything that's in, all the air that's in it, send it out and bring in air from the outside. We're currently doing that already. Our custodians have been doing that. Long before me, I only made it three weeks, but they've been doing it for, for quite a while. So, um. The buildings have been kept up. I, I, I can tell you that I've been in many, worked in many communities. And not a lot of communities will keep up their systems, um, like all of you have. Um. So there really isn't anything that we saw on this report that we can't address with one of those three solutions. Um, some might take longer than others, um, depending on supply chains. Um, if we're going to. Talk about putting HEPA filters, um, portable units in classrooms, then, you know, there, we know they're three to six weeks out. Um, if, if, if we're going to put glycol in a system. And we'll talk more about that when I get into report. If we're going to put glycol in a system, that's a quicker fix. Um, so. Right now, we have the luxury of some time. Um, as we heard earlier, everyone knows the cold weather's coming. But for right now, we can dilute, we can open windows, we can open doors. Um, we can move air into the building. Um, our, our focus is on those colder months that we know are coming. Because that's when the windows are going to close, we're all going to be inside. Um, and, and that's, that's when we're, we're stuck with the inside of the building. So we're going to move. With some of the recommendations. With our target of the colder weather. Um, so. We will react to all of. All of the buildings with different solutions. Um, air exchanges, everybody wants to talk about air exchanges. Um, there's, there's numbers of, and I'll be the first one to tell you, I'm not an engineer. My degree is in building construction. I'm the fix-it guy. I'm the facilities guy. When the motor breaks, I can put new motors in and things like that. Um, the calculations will leave it to, to the engineers. Um. One part of a report said that we have 500 CFM in each classroom and we want to have 800 CFM to meet the standards. Well, that's fine now because we can open the windows and the doors, but we know in January when it's 10 degrees outside. That's not going to make people comfortable. So when we can't exchange the old air inside with enough fresh air from the outside. We'll do things like exchanging it through a filter. So we're taking the old air that's inside, send it through a filter and exchange it back into the room cleaned through the filter. And we'll continue to bring in, even if we do go down that route of filtering. Internal filtering, we're still going to bring in fresh air as much as the system will let us. So each of these systems, um, we're going to tax them as much as it's safe so that we don't break them down. Um. And I'll go through the report. And show you what we pulled out. Um, I'll start with the high school. No upgrades needed. The high school HVAC, um, is running well. It's giving us the air exchanges we need. Um, same with Lake West Commons. Uh, there, there are little things that we're not going to cloud up the report with right now, but like at Lake West Commons, one of the custodial closets needs an exhaust vent. I'm not going to put all those little things in here to take up your time tonight, but. Other than that, high school in Lake West Commons. We're, we're in great shape. Um, then we get to the middle school. Uh, UNIVETS, um, for those that aren't familiar with the term, the UNIVET is that. Large metal box that's against the window in most classrooms. That circulates the air, it brings the air in from the outside, it heats the air. It's, you know. It's one of those things that. As a facilities guy, I wish they never designed in a classroom. Because there's always air moving, the kids are sitting in front of it, the teachers are putting books on it, because it's a great place to store things, and why wouldn't they? Um, but we have them in, in two of the buildings, middle school and Pine Hill. Um, so we, we're, we've been told from the report that those UNIVETS. Can be reprogrammed to bring in the air that we need. And then in doing that. We have to exhaust the same amount of air. So it, it's a balancing act between supply air and exhaust air. Um, for anyone that's been in, gone to a building downtown where the air is whipping through the, those. Those streets and you can't open the door. Um, that's because the building's not balanced. Or if you go to a building and you do open the door and you get that waft of. Hot air that blows out, um, in the winter, that's because the building's not balanced. So we want as much air going out in the exhaust as we do come, have coming in. Um, to supply. So at the middle school, that can be done for our computerized maintenance system. Um, the controls that we have. So we've, we're confident that we can make those changes. Um, and still, we're going to keep the purging. An hour purge in the morning and an hour purge after the building's empty. Just to keep empty and emptying that building, um, of all of the air. Um, we're going to install MERV 13 filters on the rooftops. We've contacted the rooftop manufacturer from the middle school rooftop units. And they said that there are eights in there. Um, we can, we can move up to 13s. So as long as the manufacturer tells us we're not going to break down the equipment. That's what we're going to do. So we can move on the middle school, um, very quickly. Uh, chickering, chickering has a little different, um. System. All of their class, there are no UNIVETS, so all of their classrooms are fed with rooftop units and air handling units that are on the roof. Um, which, in my opinion, for learning is much better. Um, so. What we're going to do at chickering is we're going to boost the filters to 13. Again, the manufacturer said we can move to 13. Um. We can't bring any more. Air, outside air in. These units are at their max for bringing in outside air. So we can't dilute. So we're going to catch, we're going to catch it with the filters. Um, so that's how we're going to take care of chickering. And then there's also a chickering, there's what's called a. A recovery wheel, a heat recovery wheel. Um, in our energy efficient days of not long ago. We would take the warm air from the classroom, put it through the heat recovery wheel and then send it back to the system. Um, kind of like a turbo system in a car for those that work on cars, um, so that we wouldn't have to heat the cold air. Well. In the shoulder months, in the, in the spring and the fall, we can shut that down. Because we're not heating really, really cold air and our system will keep up with it. So the two things there are chickering. Um, that we can do to, to get us to where we need to be. And then at Pine Hill.
Headphones.
Pine Hill's where we need to make decisions. That's, that's going to be our challenge. It's the oldest system in the district. Um, it is a UNIVET type system. The report says that we're nearing the end of the life of the equipment. Um, although it does all still operate. Um, so there's a couple of things we can do. We, we can't. Increase the outside air without risk of freezing. Um, freezing the coils. If we bring in. Cold air across the coil that has water in it, it's going to freeze. Um, so we can introduce an antifreeze, a glycol, it's called. Into the system to keep it from freezing. That way there we can bring in more of the outside air when the cold, when the weather gets cold. Um, that's one, that's one way to go, go at it. The other way is to purchase and install portable HEPA filters, um, in each classroom. Uh, so that would be 31. HEPA filters in each classroom. We would still bring in what we can for fresh air from the outside. But these filters will bring the inside air through. Through a filter, filtration system, so it cleans it and puts it back into the room. Um, so we'll need to decide and, and talk on that more and how we're going to do it. And then those rooftop units, we can put in a MERV 13 filter there. So we're going to boost up the filtration. Um, system in there. So. That's just a quick overview. Uh, I didn't get into the details that the engineers can. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um. I, I just, I, I do want to thank you all for moving this up to the second agenda item. Um, and I, and I, I tried, I tried to keep it brief, um. Um, so, because I know you do have other agenda items and, and I appreciate that move, um, you know, for my sake. Thank you.
And I can just add that we will be sharing the reports because they're very educational too. They go through each building and the systems and have photographs. Um, so those will be shared. They're just, uh, they haven't been completed yet, so. Um, but we have this meeting scheduled and we wanted to make sure that we can at least communicate, uh, to you. Um, sort of the, um, classroom, um. Uh, uh, items that we wanted to start working on right away. Uh, but, uh, they will definitely be shared. It's just we don't have them completed to do that yet.
Thank you, Dawn and Paul. And I'm sure once we get that shared, I'm sure we'll have some clarifying things at that point, um, unless there's anything pressing. Anyone wants to ask now, but without the full report. I'm not sure if there's much more we can ask. So, and it seems like my committee might have more questions than the rest at that point, so.
Okay, I'd, I'd be happy to come back when the report comes out and be agenda two again.
Yeah, because I think that, uh, Sherburne is going to, you know. Like I said, it's a dear school. Michael, did you have a question?
Yeah, a quick question and thanks for the, the, uh, excellent overview, Paul. Um, the internal, were, 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 were the internal classrooms in the high school deemed. Uh, sufficient from an air, uh, quality standpoint? An airflow standpoint?
Yes, everything in the, in the high school was, they told us was working and operating with the proper airflow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, is that it for now? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to move on to the, uh, next.
Thank you, Paul.
Bye, all.
Bye, Paul.
Thank you.
So the next, um, item which we're jumping back to is the student services update. So Kate.
Yeah.
Sorry, there you are. My, my people keep moving.
Okay. Um, thank you for having me. It'll be tough to follow HVAC, but I will try. Um, so I was just remembering when I was thinking about my time a year ago. When I came and trying to think about all the ideas and the plans I had when I. Was bright-eyed and bushy-tailed and non-pandemic, but here we are. Um, so I'm going to talk about just some general district-wide pieces and. Um, I'll introduce Naomi and Stephen after, um. I finish, just to get more into the building level updates. I will say that special education has been busy like everybody else and I think, um. If anyone here has ever interacted with any person in the special education department in any of the four schools, you know, we are the most. Compassionate and flexible people and all of those things are being, um. Put to the test right now and everyone is doing such a fantastic job. I know that, you know, the biggest piece that we've been working on is. You know, putting students at the center of everything we do. I know that, um, for doing that, we've been communicating a lot with families. Around the plans for students in the hybrid models or fully remote models, um, if that's what they have chosen. Or high needs for day in-person model. So through that, one of the things that, uh, we've been focusing on is. Really how will supports look different, uh, now versus maybe when IEPs were written, when we were fully in person. Um, so to do that, we've been writing, uh, things, uh, something called fall learning plans. They are. In process of going out right now. They are being written for every single student, uh, really to outline for families. Discussions that have happened around what is going to look different and how the students will receive everything that they need. Uh, and so that has been a big focus right now. We also have been assessing where students are. So we know that from March on was a big disruption to. Their lives, their supports and their skill building. And so we are, uh, having everyone really take, take into account where their finding students are currently. In all of their skill areas so that we can think about their programming and think about what changes might need to be made. Uh, I think that, you know, another big piece has been. Although we have a small population of high need students that, that kind of fit that criteria. Uh, their programming is unique and that is why they need additional in-person opportunities. And so. Their programming itself and the coordination of it has been an added level of, of, um. Of support and focus that we've had. So, so that's kind of some of the more general district-wide focuses. Uh, communication has also been so huge. I know that from the spring, uh, we have been. Working with families and talking with people, uh, about what kinds of questions they have, what kinds of things were helpful. Um, and so both internally by staff talking with one another about how. Um, how they envision supports, what kind of PPE they, they need, what kinds of structures they need some support with. Um, so those meetings are happening ongoing, um, and. Um, and then we also have um been thinking about how to engage parents more frequently. I think we've always done things that every teacher does of introductory letters and and getting to know your new liaison. And now you're doing that with an added level of hearing about hybrid learning and PPE and how services look different. So a lot of that communication has been, again, ongoing, but a little different this year. Uh, one other thing that I learned from the spring was that it was helpful for parents to have a forum to come together and to hear from uh the special education kind of leadership. So we are starting our um kind of question and answer sessions next week. We're going to hold two elementary sessions next week and two uh regional level um sessions next week. They will be the first of many. I think we won't have all the answers all the time. I learned from um someone last week, the phrase, we're doing our pandemic best. Uh, I think that we all are assuming best intentions and working together in ways that uh, we never would have dreamed we'd get to do. Um, so it's been, it's been very nice and it's going, it's a, it's been a journey and it's continuing. But I have to say that we all feel very lucky that we have such collaborative and engaging families. Um, and that has been just such a gift through this, so. Um, so that's more of the uh district wide feel. Uh, I'm going to pass it to Naomi O'Brien, the elementary uh special education coordinator um to talk more about Pine Hill and Chickering.
Hello, can you guys hear me? I'm sorry, I've never used these particular headphones. Okay, perfect. Um, so just to kind of uh follow up on what Kate was saying, I think at the elementary, a large focus for us has really been um continuing to identify what students need. And I feel this kind of started in the spring when we started remote learning, but really looking at how to help strengthen skills necessary to build independence for students at kind of our youngest levels. That was our biggest takeaway and feedback from families was that especially some of our youngest students and um how much support they required to kind of move through a lot of these components of remote learning. So we've really started to look at how to help kids navigate, how to set some checklist for themselves, really working on some of those independent skills. And I'm giving feedback to both students and families around kind of systems and strategies that are going to help build independence in that way. So that's been a large focus for us. I would say too to mirror Kate, uh, we've had a lot of conversations around our high need students and how we are um programming for them as a whole, what skill building looks like, both in person and remotely. And then in turn also doing a lot of staff training and coaching around um how to identify skills that might be missing and then how we are translating that and sharing that information with parents in a really feasible, manageable way so that we feel like we're really partnering with them and kind of helping to build skills that um students need to be successful. Um, sorry. Just kind of making sure I hit all my little points. I think we've been doing a lot of um conversations, like Kate said, with families around what's working and what's not and just doing a lot of circles of communication and a lot of check ins. I think just to speak to what I've been hearing a lot of tonight, especially with our elementary students. We know that families are stressed, students sometimes are stressed. And so really just having very transparent conversations about what's working and what's not and following up and just kind of checking in and really making sure that those lines of communication are very open and that families know that they can reach me and then in turn reach their student teams and just kind of support one another because we know there are things that are going very well and we know that there are things that are challenging. I think it's no surprise that some of our youngest learners have more and different challenges, especially with the remote learning component. So I think we're just continuing to kind of work through that together. I think that's been pretty much the elementary focus.
Great. And then um Stephen, I'd like to introduce you to Stephen Goodwin. Um, he's going to speak about the middle and high school as well as out of districts. He's also the out of district coordinator.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me and and our team here tonight, but um personally for me, this is also kind of doubles as a little bit of an entry plan. As, as many know, I started in July, um, which has been, of course, interesting uh with everything going on in the world. But it, it's been a wonderful place to join in and I'm very happy to be here. So thank you to all. Um, the first kind of at the middle school and the high school, the region, uh, the, the very first part was me and helping me getting to know staff and um connecting with them and uh parents as well as the students. Opening ten days, we worked really hard on scheduling the staff, getting the educational assistance up and running uh so that we were ready day one when students return. So a good part of that opening days were, were spent on scheduling. In addition to that, our uh teaching team, uh teachers and our educational assistants attended uh a series of trainings that were well done by Beth McCoy and company. Uh, Dr. Katie Novak was probably the highlight for many. It was how to teach within the eighty minute um uh block that we are now experiencing this year. That was beneficial both for our special education teachers, but also our educational assistants who are directly in those classrooms and they learned how to navigate Zoom breakout rooms and and really take the baton when passed to them. So that was wonderful. The other big component during that uh time was navigating and learning how to use utilize more effectively Google Classroom. I know that was um used in the spring, but as it became our learning platform, platform for the, all of the middle school and high school, it was really beneficial for our uh, our staff to really get a handle on that and what that would look like, both for their students and and for themselves. Um, I think the teachers in the educational assistance that I've been working with have really balanced that, you know, to get back to the, you know, the work that, you know, the educational and academic work, but balance what Kate has mentioned and others mentioned on this phone call in earlier, um, about the whole reason to return to four days um is the SEL needs. I've seen our, our staff really try to connect and kind of break down and and really say, how have you been since March? And not just simply jump right into math, reading, science and social studies. So they've tried to reconnect and and build those personal connections. I've seen a lot of the liaisons, liaisons reach back to their former students to check in with them. So that's been heartening to see as well. Um, at the beginning of the year, we developed the, the fall learning plans for our respective students. Um, team meetings have begun and earnest evaluations have begun to pick up some leftover from the spring and others beginning anew. We continue to hire. Um, even at this point, we're, we're still in need of a educational assistant or two. So if you know anybody out there in your world, we would uh certainly uh tell them to go to school spring. We are, we are open for business. But we are well, much better staff than we even were a couple day, a couple weeks ago, so. But still, that is um I need. On a personal front, I just want to say thank you to both Kate and Naomi. I've leaned on them tremendously since July first and I thank them for their support of helping me get up and running. If okay, Kate, I'll, I'll switch over to the out of district and and go from there. Is that okay?
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I've tried my best to reach out to as many of the out of district families as possible and have connected with a tremendous amount of them since July. Um, I, I, I had been in an out of district placement at one point. Half of my career was as a principal and half was at the lab collaborative. So I think I know a little bit of what, of what it's like to work and interact with students in out of district placements. And I know how, you know, important it is to make that personal connection, which I've tried to do with our forty plus families that, that are um in those type of settings. Um, uh, having said that, due to COVID, there were a few uh families that were uh situations that were just unsettled because of COVID. But we nicely worked throughout the summer and into the fall to secure their placement, which has been wonderful. Um, they uh, that took some work and effort and a huge major thank you to Kerry Campbell, who is our academic, I mean, I'm sorry, our administrative assistant for um in the special education office, who does an incredible job with transportation. As you can imagine, uh, the programs that are uh, the number of programs, the thirty to forty programs have all uh a tremendous amount of different schedules. And uh, she just did a phenomenal job organizing all the transportation that went along with that. So I had to say the special thank you to her. Um, those meetings, the out of district meetings have begun, which has been uh, you know, just great to get to know the students and and learn a little bit about their progress as well. So thank you for your time tonight. Look forward to working with you this year.
And I know it's not under the special education update, but if it's okay, I had a little bit of a social emotional learning update too, under the student services umbrella. Okay, awesome. Um, I'll be brief, I know we're two hours in. Um, so we uh have been thinking a lot since really I got here uh last July about really social emotional learning and looking at different district wide programs that align with some of the um kind of state castle uh com- compet- I always say this wrong, competencies. Uh, and we have been uh lucky enough to partner with the program I was talking about earlier, the SSIS. It's the SEL Assessment and Intervention Program. Um, that has been one thing that isn't going to solve everything, isn't going to kind of put a number on all of the different things that we need to, to be doing. But it, I think will at least be an opportunity for us to have a full district wide way to collect some data around um students, both uh social emotional skills as well as social skills. And um, so I just wanted to talk about that a little bit more. I know I, I briefly touched upon it, but uh the assessments are given to both uh available for students, families and uh teachers as well. And it involves ten to twenty minute assessment. And it looks at all the different um areas like self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and decision-making skills. And so it just takes a lot of um of those pieces into account and also does uh is available through K to twelve. So we are working on, you know, delivering that. It's all virtually available, although at the younger ages, there are some uh alternative modes for um uh giving the assessment. So um, so I just wanted to say, I know I said that a little bit earlier, but that's just one of the many things that we're doing um that I wanted to, to bring to you. I also, one of the other pieces that we had been talking a lot through the task force uh this summer as well as really again, lots of different groups that have been focusing on social emotional wellbeing is really hearing from staff, what would be helpful in this time of uncertainty? What would be ways that we can um, you know, support, support them? And and one thing that we've heard uh many times was for really them to have time to talk with one another and maybe have um some resources in just this uncertainty, not on one specific thing necessarily, because there's kind of a, a wide variety of, of pieces that people would want to process or talk about. Um, so we do have an outside consultant that had been working with us with the social emotional uh kind of clinical group and had been working with the center and the GRIT programs. And we have asked him to come back and actually holds monthly sessions for all staff. And so we're doing that on top of uh working with our, our groups. We're still trying to think about what structure is best and 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 all of that. But it's more of a drop in, it's not another thing to go to. It's not another professional development to be part of. It's really to come with what you, you're, you're um carrying and really have that time to, to process. And as always, on the kind of family front, we are, that was another piece of feedback that we received, not just the special education family group, but really holding some sessions for all parents and not necessarily to have information shared, but just to have time with one another to hear how they're all doing with their new normal and 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 ideas that each other has. So we are going to pick those back up and continue to share resources. Any speakers or any, there seem to be a lot of resources. We want to be careful not to overload people with other things to do. So um, we're working on maybe just to create some forums and some time to, to, to speak with one another. So that was everything from the student services special ed world.
Does anyone have any questions from any of the committees um to pose to Kate or um to Naomi or Stephen?
Can I, can I just add one thing, Angie? Um, after having heard the presentations, I don't think it can be stated clearly enough or enough in general um how lucky we are to have this team and how far we have come as a system. Just remember, it was maybe two years ago, we were uh going through the whole reorg. Uh, we had the, the special education review slash audit. And um I think we were cautiously optimistic that our plan would work out. Uh, we did end up adding Stephen's position this year. Um, it was really a big ask to have Kate carrying the director of student services as well as oversight of special ed. And uh her uh, her ability to kind of craft Stephen's position into a part coordinator and part out of district uh coordinator was really uh clever. And the feedback I'm getting from people has been incredibly positive across the board. So I want to thank uh Kate, Naomi and Stephen for their efforts. Um, I don't want to take any more time than that, but just to say thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Um, Angie, did, yeah, could I ask, well, like a comment and a question?
Go ahead.
Um, I, I did just want to say a thank you to the three of you for your presentation. Um, specifically for its detail and also for the attention, the proactive attention that you're paying to all of our students and their ability to problem solve around remote learning. I, I think a lot of our conversation tonight has been focused on the idea that, you know, remote learning is bad and in-person learning is good and we need to get to in-person learning. And I don't think there's anybody on a, on a like general level who would disagree with that. But the reality of our situation right now is that kids need skills and be able to engage in both. And that, and so I think at the extent to which you guys are working proactively, not just with students on special education plans, but just sort of more globally around building those skills. And, and, and I, I think that there are probably other um competencies that are going to come out of this that we're maybe not even expecting. You know, I mean, for, for things I've noticed, you know, my kid is now able to read an email and respond to an adult in a more, you know, um, very sort of adultish way that even my older children didn't have when they went to college. So I, I think that, you know, the more that we can take advantage of this unfortunate situation, and I can see from your presentation that you're doing this. I know it's hard work. There's going to be, you know, no gold stars for it because it isn't what we all want. But it's important to do because it's a matter of meeting the moment. So I just thank you guys a lot for that. No, no, but like, it's not a popular thing to say, we're working hard on doing this well. But I mean, I think especially tonight, like you could think that you're all going back and then you're not. And the more that we can arm our kids to not see remote learning as like a total failure all the time, the better we will all be in the long run. So thank you.
Thank you.
Angie, can I?
Go ahead, Brooke.
Sorry. Um, thank you, Naomi. Hi, Stephen, it's nice to, to see you. And um Kate, I just, well, I have you here. I, about the um education piece, um, we had our first challenge success uh meeting on Friday with Ellen and we did come up with some, what we have had input is some of the needs. So let's make sure that we liaise about that. So we're not, um, so we're pooling our resources and our, our efforts and um we're hitting the areas that you're seeing need for as well. So we're moving that, that ball along. So thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anyone else?
Yep, I have my hand raised.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't.
My people keep moving.
Um, anyway, uh, thank you all and welcome, Stephen. Um, I have a couple of really quick questions. One is, um, Kate, you talked about uh students with the IEPs are being reached out to. How about kids with um five oh fours? Is that something that's on the radar? Um, also, a little bit, you mentioned GRIT. I'd love to hear a little bit more about those programs and how those are being utilized right now um to act, to help some of the most vulnerable students. And also, um, since I hear from parents when they talk about needing to get back four days, the focus is I don't know that I've ever heard anybody say academically, they think that that's what they really need. It's, it's for social emotional reasons. Um, and so is there, besides having workshops and opportunities for parents to discuss, is there being more outreach for parents for whom potentially um things like depression or anxiety in their students are something new and they're not really sure even how to start to access anyone? If there have been more uh outreach to help parents navigate that? Thank you.
Thank you. So I was jotting down the notes. The first question was around, can you remind me?
Oh, sorry, um, five oh fours?
Okay, yeah. Um, so the five oh fours are, um, yes, in a similar fashion, uh, the five oh four coordinators, which uh really starts with the assistant principals, but also then the guidance counselors. Similar to the, the spring, they're also reaching out um to talk about how accommodations are accessible. to talk about how accommodations are accessible and in that piece, there is less of a formal plan. But I think that's more case by case through through discussions, but I can find out more about kind of the the system for that. But in the same piece, so the fall learning plan includes any accommodations that look different and any accommodations that are you know, even in person or remotely delivered in a a different way. And so that same conversation is happening for the 504 plans around the accommodations. Second question was around SEL.
I think it was about like the grit. Sorry.
I was, I was jotting them down. So so grit, so that the, again, just as a reminder, the home-based model at the center is chikering and that is still in place. It's not a special education program. It's open to all and that's that's still up and running and occurring currently. The middle school grit program is is running and actually last year had mostly sixth graders and this year has students in all different grades. They still have the home-based model that has educational assistance attached to it that supports students both in classes or if they need the the home-based setting and as well as a counselor and then educate a liaison. At the plan this year was to have it also be a program that is in existence at the high school due to some of the factors in staffing and students like in students in the program. We are putting a pause button and starting grit at the high school in the next school year. Mainly just because with the the population of students at the middle school coming up, there were actually no eighth grade grit students last year. So that was one factor in just the population. We knew that the 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 program would grow, but just due to some staffing and support needs, we are just going to put a pause on that. It's not, that's not going to happen. It will be in effect next year. And then your last piece was around parents and outreach for things that this is new to them, right? Isn't that, that was kind of the gist of the question? Yes.
I thought that was the gist of it.
So, so, yes, so in the, in the, right before we came back for the year, we actually sent a question, a survey out to both faculty and staff really around social emotional wellbeing of the of just how people were feeling about returning or there are any concerns they had around their children. One of the questions around the survey, which was very well responded to or response rate was very high, was would you like someone to reach out to you to check in with you? And so we've gathered that information and the school counselors and really anyone with a relationship with those families is reaching out and having that connection. So that was one way that we're trying to gather some of that information. I think the other piece that we will be continuing will again be the the check-ins and the the reach out just on the parent sessions and the and the Q and A times. I think from my perspective, when I was hearing feedback around those, it wasn't necessarily that people wanted like a resource kit or tools. They just wanted someone, they wanted to know who to reach out to. And so that's what we've been at work doing. The survey asks, do you have someone in the building that you know to reach out to with a question? If that answer was no, they're getting a call. And so that's just some of the beginning of that work and we'll continue to really offer things district-wide so that families, you know, have have spaces to come and discuss things, but also get more familiar with the student services and the social emotional supports in district.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Kate, Naomi and Stephen. I really appreciate you taking the time and explaining that and thank you all for your questions to them. So moving on, we're going to go next to the diversity task force update. Dr. Keo, I assume that's from you?
Yes. Yep. So thank you very much. And I'm, I'm sorry that we're so late into the evening and we lost half our crowd because this is important stuff. But I'm happy to report that the diversity task force is coming together. You'd think I would have learned something from watching Beth put together the 80-person innovation committee and but it's just so hard to say no to people when they ask to be involved. So we basically have opened this thing up and and right now I have representation from teachers, from from parents and school committee members, Boston families, graduates, current students. We expect to have more current students from the various groups within, especially the high school, but also the middle school that concentrate on issues of equity. And we need to bring those kids into the conversation. It's one of the big gripes that we heard, and I know I shared some of that feedback from our students last year. One of the things was that we don't talk about this stuff enough. And so including kids in in this work will be important to us. So as this moves forward, the first thing I really want the group to do is to develop a mission and really be focused on what it is we're trying to to do. Why are we, why, why does this group exist and what is it we hope to accomplish? Obviously, it should be consistent with our core values. But I, you know me by now, and I'm a firm believer in having those kinds of missions or core value statements etched in stone. So people don't run astray. And so that will be the first thing we'll concentrate on. We will then have to decide what our key areas of focus are. So I gave you kind of off the top of my head list because I've been thinking about this for a long time, things like assessing, assessing where we are. So in the spring, we talked about the possibility of an of an audit. But audits usually consist of surveys, interviews that focus on kind of figuring out what the degree to which DS embraces and promotes diversity. I think sometimes we think to ourselves, well, we're very accepting. That's not what I'm talking about at all. This isn't about, I don't think I heard from you. I definitely don't feel this myself. It's not about being more accepting. It's actually about promoting diversity and embracing diversity. And the richness that we miss out on and when we don't do that. So we want to, I would think, but again, I mentioned in my memo to you that I will listen to to the committee for their feedback. I would think we'd want to look at our culture. And when I say culture, I mean, the way we do business for instances or actions that promote or overlook institutionalized racism. And I'll give you an example that is that's one that's been brought to my attention. And some people might say, well, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. And that is when we do the kind of old history day in Sherburne. And seemingly to say to our kids, well, let's go back 100 years and and play the role of who we would have been 100 years ago. Well, or or 200 years ago, better yet. And 200 years ago, for our black students, they could very well have been servants or even slaves. And so, but that just gets glossed over. It just doesn't, it just doesn't go to the surface. So then the kids go home and say to their parents, what am I supposed to do? And the parents say to me, do you think that's okay? And I don't. So that's the kind of thing, we do a lot of that stuff, folks. We really do. And I think it's important for us to look at that. And and to be honest with ourselves and not not be afraid to, you know, speak freely to these issues because I think in the name of not being controversial or disruptive, sometimes we let stuff sit and fester and that's a disaster. So we want to encourage conversation. You know, reviewing of our hiring or our onboarding practices. We talked about this last year when I was part of the Wellesley system, it was mandatory that I took the ideas class. It was called the MI then, but it was mandatory. And I think we, we definitely should make that kind of recommendation for our system. Review the Medco program and other programs intended to support our students of color. We have a sizable population of of kids of color and I'm not sure that we're, we're reaching out to those families the way we could more proactively as opposed to reactively. You know, as a, as a, as a white male growing up in Sherburne, I'm sure my parents, I hope it wasn't the case, but perhaps my parents didn't concern themselves with any of the Asian families or what it was like to be Asian in our community. I don't know if they reached out to Asian people in the community or or expected the administration to check in with folks to see how responsive we were. And I think we should be, we should be more thoughtful in that way. Review of our curriculum to ensure that we're educating on the importance of diversity and highlighting the many diverse voices in the world in all subject areas. This is a place that the kids hit us hard. And and I think they are really on to something. And this is why a larger body to me is attractive because we we will have a lot of voices at the table and we can split into subcommittees and really delve deeply into some of these issues. Focusing on community education to ensure that we're providing events, speaker series, roundtables, books in common, etc., that keep diversity alive in our communities and foster communication. Review of district policies to ensure that we're not biased in the application of our rules, regulations or decision-making. So those were just some that came off the top of my head. I'm sure that you may have some ideas. Sarah has offered to join us from Dover. I know that Lynn and help me now because I'm getting tired. And Kate from the region are serving on the task force and from Sherburne. Angie, did you give me a name? Was it Megan?
It was Nancy.
Nancy, excellent. So, so we have representatives from each of the school committees. And I have to do another mailing, but our first meeting will be on the 21st and let's, you know, let's be clear, I'm not going to be here for the next 10 years, but I really, really, really feel strongly that this is something that Dover Sherburne has to latch on to and make part of our existence moving forward. I just think it's so, so important. The messaging and what we teach our students as they go out into a very complex and diverse world is everything. And it is one of the things that we get feedback on all the time from our graduates is that geez, you know, we went to these very diverse schools and weren't ready. And I love the fact that, for example, my daughter now who's at college really, really loves the diversity of the school and learning more about it. So why wait till college? We can do that in our schools and do it a little more deeply. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed on it and 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 suggest that we have regular report outs to the joint school committees so that you know what we're up to and can give your feedback.
Does anyone have any questions that they need to pose or? Thank you, Dr. Keo, for that report. And thank you for those who are serving on this task force giving their input. That's, it's necessary. And if you have any questions and you would like to forward it on to any of the representatives here, the school representatives, please do. We can pass that information on or if there's any questions that you have or any guidance that you would like to give, please do that. We would be open and we would love to hear any input and welcome that.
I also, I also would not stop anyone from joining on, even though we already have representatives from the school committees, because I think it's important that we speak with one voice to this.
I agree. Thank you. Next is the update on superintendent search. For that, we'll hear from Anne Hovey.
Thanks, Angie. I had much more to say, but given the time, I'm going to make this really short and focus on what's happening right now. We are in the midst of our community outreach, which is really important because what we hear from all members of the community, you know, it's parents, it's students, it's educators, it's administrators. That helps us form our candidate profile, which then helps us really hone in on what are the qualities that we want in a new leader. As part of the outreach, I just want to ask members of the school committees, if you are a liaison to a parent group like PTO or CSA, CPAC, if you could reach out to the leaders or to the members of those committees and remind them that we have parent Zooms two are this Thursday, so the 15th, and then two are next Monday. So that's the 19th. And ask people if they have any interest in participating, please do so. They can find the links on the district website. If you go to the landing page for both the the district and then all three. So Pine Hill, Chikering and the region, well, actually in the middle school and the high schools are all four of the buildings. In the left-hand column, there is a search superintendent search committee. If you click on that tab, it'll take you to the links and you can sign up for both the focus groups, which once again are taking place on Thursday and then the following Monday for parents. And also they could take the survey, which anybody in the community can take. And also if they're interested in serving on the screening committee, which is the group of people who create questions for and then talk with the first round of candidates. That that's something that we will, that you can self-nominate if just fill out, answer some questions about that. I mean, we're still taking nominations for that. And if anybody has any questions about the search, to please reach out to any of the search team members. Right now it's me, Michael Jaffe, Angie and Mark Healy, Angie Johnson. We are all more than happy to talk to any of you and answer any of your questions. And also a reminder to the joint school committee that we do have a workshop on Monday at 6:30. You'll get some more information about that later this week. Thanks.
Okay, so finally, unless anybody has any questions for Anne with regards to that, but like I said, and like Anne said, you're always free to reach out to your reps on this who are on the search committee and we'll keep you informed and we'll have that next meeting where you'll get a lot more information. So the final thing is the consent agendas, which we need to approve. This, these are two of them, August 25th and the September 8th. So were there any corrections or additions that you saw that were missed? And if there were, if you can let us know. If not, can we take these two together in the interest of time?
Angie Eagle Eye and pointed out to me that the vote on the MOU, I would say no, and that's not reflected. So
That was on the which state was that one? That was on the 25th?
It was the second one.
It's on the 8th. Okay. Oh, yeah, there you are. The MOU, you were a no. So we'll have to vote on these separately because we'll have to make an adjustment.
I actually see one, Angie.
Which?
I just happened to flip the page. So on August 25th, the motion for the search for the region has the motion by Michael Lee.
That would be a problem, wouldn't it? Should we get these adjusted and then vote on them the next time?
No, you can vote on them with with the edits as stated, and you can still vote on them together.
Okay. So the way that this will go, we're going to do them the one at a time, don't you think? Because it's too confusing.
No, you need consent agenda, you do all at once.
You just do it all at once.
So this, for the consent agenda with the correction of August 25th, that the vote on the superintendent search should be Michael Jaffe and not Michael Lee. Is that correct? And as for the vote on the MOU, that Michael Jaffe voted no. Is that correct, Michael? And it has him as voting yes. So it needs to be amended to state that. So with those corrections on each consent agenda, do I have, we'll have to do a motion per school committee. So we can start with you, Maggie, to accept those. Kids with agenda minutes. With those corrections.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the corrections as stated by Ms. Johnson?
Anne Hovey, so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
Thank you, Kate Potter, second. So just for a roll call vote, Lynn. I see Lynn Collins, a yes, even though there's something with your, yeah, you got Lynn Collins, yes. Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Anne?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
And Kate?
Kate Potter, yes.
Maggie Sharon, yes. Back to you, Angie.
Brooke, do you want to go with your team next? Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Sarah. And a second.
Seconded, Mark.
Mark, thank you. Um, we lost Leslie, she had to to run, but, um, any discussion? No. Okay, a roll call, Sarah.
Eric Goodear is done, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
And Brooke Maderis, yes.
Okay, so Sherburne, take yourself off mute. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended for August 25th and September 8th?
Amanda Brown, so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Megan Page, second.
Hey, do I have any discussion? Everyone, take yourself off mute and I'll do the roll call. Nancy?
Nancy Cordell, yes.
Mike?
Mike Fitzgerald, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes. Well, that concludes our business for the evening. So a move that we adjourned and it is nine oh four. So thanks, everyone, for hanging in there. I really appreciate your time and all your efforts.
Where, see, everyone, am I correct, on Monday, the 19th at six o'clock?
I think it's 6:30.
6:30, okay.
Um, I'll send the links out this.
Okay, yeah, see, I might have told you six, so take note of that. I can't remember, but I have it in my calendar six, so.
We'll send a reminder. We need to double check that tonight. Thank you all.